Sponsors, rather, the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District, which was our host for Monday's forums in Banning, and Mount San Jacinto College, which has graciously hosted us Wednesday in San Jacinto and today and Friday at the Menefee Campus here. All of these forums are being streamed live on PE.com and also Ustream.tv. These forums also will be available to be viewed on demand on PE.com on the road trip page of the political area of the website. We have simple rules for our forums. We'll begin with two-minute opening statements. We will have a minute for each question. There is one segment today where the challenger will answer slightly different questions rather than the incumbents. We also have two-minute closing statements. During the opening statements, candidates will answer those questions as determined by ballot order. Closing statement will be in the reverse order. And now I'd like to turn this over to our moderator, Dr. Stacy Searle Chapin, who is a political science professor here at the Menefee Campus of Mount San Jacinto College. Stacy?
Wow, thank you. Good morning. Our first forum today will focus on the city of Wildemar, one of Riverside County's newest cities. Wildemar became a city on July 1st, 2008. It has nearly 30,000 residents, and the city has plenty of historic roots, such as the art of the Butterfield Trail Line from the 19th century. So we'd like to welcome the candidates from the city of Wildemar, and let's take the time to introduce each candidate. We have Timothy W. Walker, a small business owner; Martha Bridges, a retired businesswoman; Ben Benoit, a local independent businessman; Kristin Lloyd, a community volunteer; Marcia Swanson, an incumbent; Cheryl Aide, a member of the city council. There are three seats available. Marcia Swanson and Cheryl Aide are incumbents, while Scott Allen Farnum chose not to run for reelection. So each candidate will now have two minutes with an opening statement. Let's start with Timothy W. Walker.
Hello. My name is Tim Walker. I'm a longtime resident in Wildemar. Been there, bought in 31 years ago, and lived there for 29. Come out of the inner-city LA, that's where I was born and raised. Moved out to a nice area when I got here, where there was nobody around but the coyotes and the rabbits and everything else. It was awesome times back then. I did watch how the area grew. I was curious to see what was going to come on. When the freeway finally showed up, and I was driving down the freeway, there was nobody on the freeway with me. It was pretty wild at that time. We used to have to do the backroads out to Elsinore, go into Los Angeles, and you'd have to get off in Riverside. You couldn't even connect over to Ontario. So I've been here a long time, and I've watched a lot of the developments come here, and I've seen some of the mistakes the other cities have made with their developments and the impact it's done on the traffic situations and different things like that, and not pushing Caltrans and different people to keep up with the growth. I was privy to a lot of the information that went on, because I am a courier, and I saw a lot of the stuff that was coming. And I did know where all the growth was going to happen, so I kind of tried to stay away from that area as best I could. It has affected our little community, and now that we're starting to grow, we just want to make sure that we grow in the right way. And business is always going to be the key for any community to survive. And since we are a small community, that's the only thing that's going to help survive, is bringing in and promoting businesses to come into our town.
Thank you. Now we go to Martha Bridges.
Good morning. I'm a long-term resident. I've been in Wildemar for 23 years. I moved out to Wildemar because I liked the rural and semi-rural community. We have wonderful neighborhoods. We have great people here. But I'm running for city council because I felt that incorporation was premature, based on Wildemar's financial position. And a lot of people didn't agree and wanted to move ahead. And I think that with the recession that we are still experiencing, that most of my concerns about moving ahead prematurely have been validated. I also am running because I feel that the inaugural council moved too rapidly once cityhood was upon us, and failed to heed the very, very blunt and serious cautions that LAFCO put out to the community when they were considering incorporation. And that was that we would need to be very, very careful financially and downright frugal for the first five or 10 years. And I feel that we need to take a long-term approach to development in Wildemar. We need to do it right. We will only have one opportunity to do it, and we need to make sure that the infrastructure keeps pace with both commercial and residential development. We've had, since cityhood, we have had some, what I would term, very poor projects brought to us by the planning department that did not abide by CEQA law and were not researched well. Thank you.
Thank you. We go now to Ben Benoit.
Morning. Thanks, everybody, for coming. And thanks for those watching online. You know, I'm running for city council because I feel our community, we have to go forward at this point. We can't look back at the past and wonder, you know, what decisions were made when, but we've got to move forward. And the best way we can do that is to bring commercial development to our city. We have a very limited sales tax base, and that's where we're really missing out compared to a lot of the communities in our area. Our area, we see that in our area, our sales taxes, compared to the other cities around us, we can tell that all of our residents are shopping outside of our area. A lot of things I like to talk about is, you know, where'd you buy your last TV at? Because there's no big box, there's no place to go to buy a large tax item, sales taxable item, in our city. We can do that with responsible growth. We have to watch our lighting and watch our traffic and the streets and everything else. And it's going to take time to put that infrastructure in. But the sooner we can get that sales generating, a sales tax generating business here, the better off we're going to be for a lot of different ideas. And one thing about, I've learned walking in Wildemar and talking to residents, is everyone has different ideas. There's a lot of great ideas out there, from trails to street cleaning to street lights. I live in an area, I'd just like to have a street someday. But all those different things combined, all have one thing in common, and that's a need for funding, and future funding, and ongoing funding through sales tax. And I don't want any new taxes on our citizens. That's not what I'm running for. I'm running just to promote our city, get that responsible growth going, and bring that sales tax home back to Wildemar, rather than feeding our economies around us.
Thank you. Kristin Lloyd.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending, those online. I do find it very important to get involved in the civic duties of the city and how it's being run, and we need to look to our leaders to make the right decisions for our future, set our building blocks in place, so that we can succeed as Wildemar. I would like to say that I have proven leadership for Wildemar the past several years. I moved in in 2001, so I haven't seen all the changes, but the changes there are coming, and I think they need to be made slowly, over time, with right decisions, and we should not be making mistakes because of the need of fiscal money coming in. We do need a tax base, however, we need to make sure that it's done properly, and take that time now to live within the budget that we have been given. We haven't quite been able to do that, and each year we will be getting less and less money than we got a perk when we incorporated. So we do need to live within our budget in these next couple of years. Let's see if we can do that and still be able to provide a quality of life for Wildemar. I was very involved with helping open the parks with my husband. He was the park chairman. We moved into Wildemar in 2001, like I said, and there were no parks for our kids. And we knew at that time that my children would not be able to use the parks. They were five when we moved in, and it took us seven years. They're now 16, and they're really not going to the park and playing on the playground. But we knew that that was an integral part of the quality of life for Wildemar. We needed to get our parks open. Right now, they are in jeopardy, and I'm very involved in the community service side of it, the community nonprofit. I'm on the board of the Wildemar Community Council, which is a nonprofit to serve Wildemar. And we have reopened our park committee. I'm the chairman currently. Things might change if I, when I get elected. I won't be able to serve, but I still will be able to serve in the capacity. So serving Wildemar is from my heart, so thank you for coming.
Thank you. Now we go to Marcia Swanson.
Good morning, and thank you all for coming. Thank you all for watching, and most of all, thank you Press Enterprise for putting this on for all of us. I've made my home in Wildemar for the past 36 years. Thirty-six years living there means a lot, but it just means I'm older than some of the people up here. Maybe a little more wisdom sometimes, sometimes not. I'm a mother, a grandmother, a businesswoman. My heart and five generations of my family reside in Wildemar, so I care. I truly care what goes on within our city. I differ a little bit, and probably because I'm an incumbent, I think we've done a great job. Our budget has been balanced. We have not been out of balance at all. It is a very small budget. We've had to make do with some things that we wanted bigger and larger. We made them a little smaller, but we're doing. We are going to keep our parks open. That is the number-one issue for me right now. It's very important to bring growth and to bring some businesses in and to bring some tax dollars in, but they won't come if we don't have parks. Nobody wants to live in a community with dried-up grass and a fence across the park. So right now, that's my focus, is to get the parks, keep the parks open, add to the parks. They're not just for the little kids. There are seniors over there. I have grandkids that are teenagers, and they are at the parks, are playing sports. I have a 15-year-old that does soccer. There's not very many places for them to play. The little ones do love the playground. There's even room to have seniors there. When we had the parks there before, we actually had a community building there where the seniors could go and meet with each other and just talk. There were some programs, there was some music, there were crafts. We need to bring all of those back to our community. And by serving on the city council for the last two years, it's not been long enough to get those things up and running. So I'd like the opportunity to serve another four years, to bring those things to our community, and to make it a home for everyone.
Thank you. And now Cheryl Aide.
Good morning, Cheryl Aide. I've lived in Wildemar since 1988. I didn't come to government, I didn't come to politics. They came to me one afternoon. Somebody rang my doorbell, and they had a deceitful petition, which said they wanted to annex a third of Wildemar to Marietta. I was very angry. I disputed everything on their petition, and they said, "Well, we don't really care. If we say these things long enough, somebody will believe them." So that was the beginning of my involvement. I went to the next municipal advisory council meeting in Wildemar and said, "Do you guys know what's going on?" I met people who said they were about to start an incorporation committee. I said, "Please, please, let me help you with that." I didn't have any experience, but I wanted to get involved. They held the meeting, they made me the secretary. I had no idea that it was going to be a six-year journey, and the end result would be incorporation. We took a few steps back during that time because we had to fight off Marietta. Once, also during that period, I was looking at the general plan, and I saw that there was some odd zoning in places that didn't belong. We had apartments suddenly zoned for the middle of our business park. We're not an infill community, so it didn't make sense. I mean, we're a new community, we're still somewhat open and rural. That got me started as chair of land development review. Reviewed all planning applications that went into the county. We had public meetings. We had the developers make presentations. We then went to planning commission, board of supervisors, to speak for, against these projects. And I also got involved in quite a few other committees and started attending county meetings and other city meetings that might have an impact upon our community. We did incorporate. I did it on the city council, and it is challenging because of the economy. But I'm hearing a lot of generalities from other people that are running, but I don't hear a lot of any detail on what they're going to do. I don't think they understand the difficulties, but I'd like to hear from them.
Okay, thank you. This question will be for each of our challengers. Some of you already touched on this in your opening statement, but I will ask, why are you running for the city council? And first up is Kristin Lloyd.
Well, good morning. I am running because, oh wait, what was the question again?
Why are you running for city council?
Why I'm running for city council. There, it's very strong right now that incumbents are going to be refilling the position, so I am running to serve Wildemar, to make sure everything is done slowly, and we do not make mistakes. We do have one choice, and we need to make sure whoever gets in office has proven leadership over the past year, few years, and that the person has Wildemar first and foremost at their forefront, and I believe that's me.
Thank you. Next, let's hear from Ben Benoit.
I'm running for Wildemar City Council because I feel that at this time, there's a lot of need in our city for future growth, and to look at that future, in the long-term future. And it's not something that's going to happen in the next year or 10 years, or it could be something 20 years out, but we have to plan for all of that and continue to plan for that going down, down the way. I just want to make sure that our city has a good, strong financial footing and continues that way. And I think we've got a pretty good start, and we'll continue to go down that path. And I just want to make sure we don't go down, and, you know, there's a lot of good ideas out there again, but, you know, if we get those ideas started before there's a way to pay for them, then we're going to be in real hurt real quick. And I don't want to see that happen in our city. I want to see us find a way to pay for them first.
Thanks. And Martha Bridges.
I'm running for city council because I love Wildemar and because I have a vested interest in it. It's been my home, as I said, for 23 years, and I expect that I will live here until the day I die. I want to see the community grow, but I want to see it grow in the right direction. And I think that we do, we do have some people that have a very narrowly shared vision and have lost touch with a great deal of the people in Wildemar. And I would like to be there to serve all of the people of Wildemar, not just a small, confined group of special interests. And I think it's very, very important that the council shift gears, sort of speak, and become much more diligent about oversight. We had an interim city manager who basically did what they wanted, and I don't think we can afford to have that happen again without oversight.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Timothy Walker.
I come from a different perspective on this. I had no intention of running for city council. I went to a couple of the city council meetings on some issues, and when I heard council members telling me and the people in the audience that they really didn't care what we said, and they were going to do what they wanted, that's a concern for me. I am a businessman. I do deal with a lot of corporations, so I know how to play that game. And I didn't, I don't have all the answers for Wildemar, but neither did any of the council people when they first started. They had to learn it. I remember someone said that in the other forum. We all had to learn. Well, you know what? It's a learning curve. I can take and learn that same curve that everybody else did. I can read the documents and figure it out, too. I do come from a different angle. I am a very conservative person. I am very conservative when it comes to money. And I don't like people spending my tax dollars and not getting total accountability for it. So that's kind of the reason I forced myself into this.
Okay, thank you. The next question is for our two incumbents. Why are you running for reelection? And let's hear from Cheryl Aide first.
Well, I thought about not running. I thought long and hard about not running. It's a lot of hours, it's a lot of time. But I'd put in six years, plus two years on the council. I'm on five subcommittees, finance, economic development, intergovernmental relations, trails, and the cemetery district. I'm on two regional committees. I have a lot of knowledge, and I, I thought I would be selling the community short if I didn't continue for this next four years. I will be done at the end of that time. I think other people should step up to the plate. But there was an awful lot of information that we had to absorb as a new city in a short amount of time. People coming on board, or people on the outside coming to the council meetings, I don't think they're aware of, I mean, they see it one way, but the reality is something else. So once they get on the council, I welcome them to come to that understanding of what it is we really do, we're a corporation.
Thank you. And Marcia Swanson.
Yes, I too agree with a lot of what Cheryl said. Two years is a very short time and a huge learning curve to get a city up and running. When I was elected, we did districts, and I didn't think districts were good for our small community, it only divided people. So I campaigned and pushed for at-large, which we won. But by winning at-large, that shortened my term to two years. I feel like I haven't finished the job. I feel like there's still things that I can offer the community, there's still things that need to be done. I too agree with Cheryl, four more years, and that's probably it for me. We need some young people in there, some new ideas. And when I say young, I don't mean in age necessarily, because age isn't what it's about. It's about the willingness to work and to give back to your community, to have ideas, to care, not running for something of benefit to you. And I think we have a good council, and I think that I can give a lot more in the next four years, and would love to do so.
Thank you. Our next question is, do you think incorporation has been good for the city of Wildemar? And let's hear first from Ben Benoit.
For the city of Wildemar, incorporation was a need because other areas were trying to incorporate us. And without incorporating, we would have lost a lot of what is now Wildemar to other cities. And from that standpoint, incorporation was the final stop to that push from those other communities. At large, the city, though, is going to be struggling, just like LAFCO told us, and we know that. And I think that's something we have to concentrate on and constantly be mindful of as we try to slowly grow our community and get in the things that we need for our community. But as a whole, I do believe it is a good thing we did incorporate, because, again, we would have lost what would have been Wildemar, would have been Marietta, and a lot of Elsinore and other areas. And I'm in the area where frankly, I would have been stuck in the middle and probably not absorbed by either city, and just would have been hanging out as a small, little unincorporated area for a long time.
Thank you. Kristin Lloyd.
I do believe that cityhood or incorporation was the right choice. We were being picked apart by Marietta. Marietta did only want the part that was profitable, right along our Clinton Keith off-ramp. And that was just, it was just unthinkable to just take the part that you wanted and leave the rest to be fended for themselves. And they would have been unincorporated for years and years, and would have ended up like Home Gardens, and they would have had to fight their own problems being left alone. Because we were being picked apart, I think it made the wisest decision. There were also decisions being made at the Riverside County level that affected the local residents that we had no voice. We would have had to go to Riverside, stop what we were doing, and have all of our meetings and meet with those individuals, and fight for our rights for what they were bringing to Wildemar. So it was local control, a local voice, and we get to make our own decisions. It's going to be tough, and we knew that at the beginning, but we're in it for the long haul.
Thank you. Timothy Walker.
Yeah, I think the incorporation was a good idea. Initially, I wasn't for that when it first came up. I did vote for it, but at the initial point, I didn't think that we were quite ready. I knew the growth was coming in the area, so I knew the tax base was going to be there eventually. I just think it was the right time. But it turned out to be the right time because of the Lake Elsinore attack, and then, of course, the Marietta attack. One of the issues that really got me more than anything else was that Marietta, they wanted to take that one sliver of our city, and then if they took those people in, even if you were part of Marietta, your students would not go to the Marietta School District. They were going to be left alone in Lake Elsinore School District, and you know what? That's not right. And if they're going to put you in the city, then they need to take responsibility for educating those children and not hang those people out to dry. And I was right on the border, so I was going to be like Ben Benoit hung out to dry, because we were in that unincorporated little strip that wasn't going to be taken. Elsinore has done it all wrong. That is, it's just a joke over there, so we didn't want to be a part of that. So yes, it's been a good thing.
Thank you. Ms. Cheryl Aide.
Was incorporation good? Was that the question?
Yes. Do you think incorporation's been good?
Good for the community? Well, I think it was, or I wouldn't have put the time in, I wouldn't have put the years in, and I wouldn't have run for city council. I don't think it was premature. We haven't taken on debt as a city. We're living within the budget. We have to, that's required by the state. Maybe we haven't made decisions that are popular with everybody, but you, you know, people voted us in to be policymakers, and we, I take the 10,000-foot view. I try to look at what's good for the whole community, not for one special group or another special group. And no matter what decision I make, some people like it and some people don't. Sometimes the developers don't like what I, my decision, sometimes they do. You can't win if you're on the city council, because not everybody's going to agree with you. But I think it was good for the community. We now have police visible, driving through our community every day. We didn't have that before. We're making local land use decisions, which were being made at the county level. That was vital. That was the reason, one of the reasons I got involved.
Thank you. Martha Bridges.
As I said originally, I was opposed to cityhood, not per se, but because I felt it was premature, and I could look down the road, and I could see that there was going to be a possible recession, and I could see the real estate bubble about to burst and whatnot. So I felt the timing was wrong. I was never opposed to cityhood, per se, at the right time. But I think the question, I think the question is now, what are we going to do? Because we can't go back. We have to move forward. And I do think that it is very important to move forward very diligently and to examine all of our options, not look for the quick answer. I disagree that we haven't taken on debt. We now owe 1.8 million, roughly, to the county, and we are not repaying that debt at this point. And I would like to see it closed before it becomes a big balloon payment.
Thank you. And Marcia Swanson.
Well, I absolutely think it was the right time, and I think even with the economic times the way it was, maybe that was even a better time. It got us off on a tighter budget. It made us look at things a whole lot more closely, what we were going to spend, what we were going to do. We were a family, and it was like somebody trying to adopt part of us out and separate us, and we didn't want that. We wanted to stay together as a community and a family. We cared about each other. Some of the ones that would have gone to Marietta thought that would have been a great idea and good, and yet, they bound together. We voted, and the vast majority wanted us to stay together and become a city. In the two short years, we have a strategic vision plan, we've got an economic development work plan, the city council committees, commissions, and boards, we have a balanced budget, we have a five-year capital improvement program, and our Measure A money has been planned for the next five years. So we'll be able to improve some of our roads. I know not all of them. It's going to be a long, slow process, but we are a city, we are a family, and we're sticking together.
Thank you. The next question is, describe your vision for the future development of Wildemar. How should the city balance new construction while at the same time maintaining its rural character? Let's hear first from Martha Bridges.
I think as we move forward, we need to respect the rural roots of the community, and that means protecting our ranch communities and also our wonderful trails. We have an incredible system of trails, which can be a great asset, not only to the people who live in Wildemar, but to the city itself in drawing in both commercial and residential development. I'm not opposed to development. It absolutely needs to come. We just need to make sure that we do it right. And I am a strong environmentalist, and I believe that we need to be very cautious in our decisions so that we don't make some of the mistakes that our neighboring communities have done. There has to be balance between more rooftops and our local resources, including water and infrastructure, and we certainly need to expand our commercial base. And we need to be very creative about that. We need to seek out out-of-the-box answers to that.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Benoit.
Wildemar's got a lot of great availability for development still. We have a lot of area along the I-15 corridor that a lot of the cities wish they still had. And we need to take that area and look at it and find out what it's going to take to develop those areas, the way we want them developed, to get the trails incorporated and everything else. But more importantly, develop those areas to the point where we can tell a builder, when someone comes to the city and says, "We want to develop this corner, what's it going to take?" That we can answer them, well, this is what we want to do as far as infrastructure in this area, and this is what we need for this area. So if they have an idea, so when they start looking at developing again, or as they start right now, hopefully, looking to develop, if they have an idea of what it's going to take to develop a certain area, and what the city wants from them as far as, you know, infrastructure and the look and the feel, and what we need to incorporate in that area. It's just something we have to do and plan for, like other cities have done not so well, but some of the cities have done it pretty well. It just depends on where you look and what we're looking for as a city. But again, keeping that rural feel is definitely, I live in a very rural area. I have an acre and a half, and frankly, I have the smallest parcel in my area. And, you know, to have that rural feel is definitely going to be a big need for our community.
Thank you. Ms. Kristin Lloyd?
Well, slow and steady, that's how I see it. We still need to look at our general plans, have a committee developed with community members, landowners, and developers. The plan is not my plan that I have for Wildomar, because I serve the Wildomar citizens. It is their plan that we need to incorporate and set policy for, so that we do succeed, we can bring in a balance. We know that rooftops do not typically bring money in. They lose money because housing, just too many rooftops is one of the key things that we have to look at. They typically do lose money. And that, we need to keep an environmentally friendly atmosphere. What's going to set us apart from Wildomar? I think we have a beautiful SCE, New Leeds Certified Platinum Building. Those kind of things are going to bring in new businesses. And we do need to, I'm sorry, I'm lost. To keep those things, think outside the box. I also want to say we have three off-ramps, which is unprecedented for a city of our size. So bring in the development, but slow and steady.
Thank you. Let's hear next from Cheryl Aid.
Planning and development was my passion, and that's why I got involved. I spent countless hours educating myself. I read the county's general plan and the appendices. I don't know too many people that have done that. I lobbied for a year and a half and spent three years lobbying the county to amend our general plan prior to incorporation. There were some things that weren't, the circulation element was not optimal. The county spent the money. It saved us money as a city. We did get it amended just prior to incorporation. So that was a cost savings to our city. I've asked the staff to put together, to bring to the council an Old Town Plan for Wildomar. And that money for the consultant for that would be through grants from SCAG. I've asked for an overlay of the ranch community. We also need an overlay of the hills and arroyos. Those are special features for our community. I've asked staff to do a fiscal analysis on each project that comes forward, so we know the cost, and we know what it's going to bring to the community. And I've done research. Prefurbia is a new, is a way that I'm asking new developers to come in and develop tract housing.
Thank you. And finally, Timothy Walker?
I've done a lot of traveling with my kids. All my kids were born and raised here in Wildomar. And we've done a lot of traveling during the summer in my previous job. I used to get a couple of weeks off during the summer. We've gone all over the United States and seen the small town, the real small town. One thing that brings me back to our area is the strip mall. It's just, I don't know, I don't have a real good taste for strip malls after seeing the rest of the United States, and now strip malls are everywhere. So development in our area really needs to be towards the rural atmosphere, the small town. I know Marietta's trying to do it downtown, but then they allow these massive buildings coming in there that completely ruin the downtown flavor. I think that's going to be one of our draws for people to move into our areas. If we have a place for downtown, if we have the shops and the restaurants, we have nothing. And that really has to come. Because like we have, everybody knows that we have three off-ramps. Those are money-making off-ramps. But you have to have people living here to be able to run everything that's in there. So housing developments have to come in also. And you've got to have people to live here. But you've got to take advantage of that. If we can draw people in for our downtown area, it'd be the same as Temecula.
And we do have one more to hear from. Sorry about that. Marcia Swanson?
The city of Wildomar is a very special place. Our city is well-known for its long history, families, ranches, and growth. Our entrepreneurs, and now our independents. Our independence gives us the ability to plan. We have room for ranches. There's a lot of ranches there now, some small, some large. There's a lot of tract homes there now, too. And while rooftops don't pay their share in property taxes, that's true. They bring commercial and economic development to a community. Without rooftops, they're not going to build anything there for us to shop and places for us to go. So you do need the rooftops. But we don't want them just built anywhere, anyplace, and thrown in like Marietta and some of the cities around us have done. We want to plan them. We want to keep our rural atmosphere. We want to be able to have a horse, if we want a horse, a chicken in our backyard. Those kind of things have always been Wildomar. And I think with planning, the way Cheryl says, the overlays are great. We've got a lot of commercial property along the freeway, and we shouldn't be putting residential homes alongside the freeway. That's where commercial's going to go. But we should have rooftops to bring that commercial in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is, should a city council member recuse themselves from voting on issues that might involve a possible conflict of interest? And so, since we skipped you last time, let's go first to Marcia Swanson.
Absolutely, and that's the hardest word in the world for me to say. Not because I think that you shouldn't, I think you should. I just have trouble pronouncing that word, so. But absolutely, I do live in Wildomar, I work in Wildomar. I don't leave Wildomar very often. So there are some projects that I will have to not be able to vote on that might affect me directly. And I think you absolutely have to be able to stand up and say, "I can't be unbiased on that decision."
Thank you. Next, Martha Bridges?
I agree completely. I think that whenever there is even a taint of conflict of interest, that that needs to be brought forward, that needs to be made public. And if there is any real conflict of interest, that you do need to recuse yourself. And I feel that that goes for the planning commission as well. I think that that's what the law calls for, and that's what the city policy calls for, and that's what's right.
Thank you. Ben Benoit?
I actually got to recuse myself last night on the planning commission. I have a, there was a development that's looking to come in just behind us, Sunset Ridge. And they were, I happen to actually know the owner out in the desert area, and he's a nice gentleman. I don't think he, he's talked about sending my money for the campaign, he has not yet. And just that thought that he might, I wanted to go ahead and recuse myself from any discussion on his development. And I did, was able to stand outside of the room and listen and hear what was going on. But that way, you know, it keeps the room clear of any unbiased thought. And it's definitely a need to do as a city. And I'll continue to do if I am involved, if I happen to know anybody or anything like that, even though it's not, it wasn't really within my area. And again, it wasn't a conflict yet, but it might be. So there's no reason for me to be in there.
Thank you. Cheryl Aid?
One of the first things that you do when you get on the city council is the attorney comes in, and you have training, ethics training. And you want to be sure to read that portion that talks about conflict of interest. It usually has to do with money, whether it's money coming to you or money coming to your family. So yes, of course, if you have a conflict of interest which is described under the statutes, you would recuse yourself. To not do so would be criminal. You know, you could just say, "I'm not going to take money, because it's my obligation as a planning commissioner or a city council member to review these, review projects and set policy." So I don't take money from developers if I know their project's going to be coming before us. Why create that? You're up there to serve, then you say, "Well, I think I'll take money, so I'll just step away." That's irresponsible.
Thank you. Timothy Walker?
Conflict of interest is definitely going to be my, one of my issues. Unfortunately, I've been here so long, and I live in a really pretty nice area. And my property is actually on Palomar. So I know that probably if we do an Old Town, it's going to affect me immediately. You know, the property values, whatever. I didn't plan to live on Palomar. It just kind of worked out that way. But you have to step away. And if that comes to fruition, then I would definitely have to step away from that, because there could never be that hint. The other thing is, people that, you know, you have people that are donating money to your campaign, or all this kind of stuff that goes on. And I know there's a lot of conflict of interest in those type of things, and everybody has to be careful with that. One thing that I did, I didn't take anybody's money. I just spent my own little bit of money with my wife, and she cut me off and says, "No more. That's it. So I have my five signs, and that's it. That's all I can do, because I'm not going to be in that position, because I know what that's all about. And we want to stay away from that kind of stuff in our city." And I know everybody here is the same way. I'm sure we all, I mean, we're pretty much all in agreement and that type of thing.
And Kristin Lloyd?
Well, we are going to all have conflicts of interest. We work in the community, we live in the community. There's also the public, it's not only money, it's also public perception. So I think once public perception is explained, and you can delineate yourself away from the project or whatever comes in front of you. But the public perception is also a key, and I think it's been a target on some people's backs for a while. But just explaining and having a relationship with the community, and being able to say, "Here's what I do, here's what I don't do, and I still will be able to serve." Myself, I have, like the other ones, just loaned my own money to myself and taken a few hundred dollars from those that actually believe that I will make a difference on city council. So everyone will have a conflict, and as long as it's explained and there's no financial gain, there should be no problem.
Thank you. Many of you mentioned the city's parks in your opening statement. So I will ask, with the loss of the city's parks fee, how should Wildomar fund its parks? Should a new fee be higher than the old one of $28 a year to pay for the development of future parks? And let's go first to Cheryl Aid.
Well, I think that's a most interesting discussion to have, because either way, whatever way you go, you're gambling. Do we use the same method we did before? That's a gamble. Do we spread the assessment out over all the parcels in the city, which would include not only single-family residential, but multifamily residential, industrial, commercial? That gives us a broader base, which would bring in more money. If we go that way, it will require a two-thirds vote rather than a majority vote. That's a risk, that's a gamble. I think this is a policy discussion for the city council to have, and we will be having it. And I think Temecula, when they incorporated, they'd have the tiered system where they did the assessment on all parcels. And I personally, I think that may be the way to go. We have parkland on the east side of the freeway, and the original assessment was going to go up from 28 to about $44 when that park got developed. So people knew about that already, but we'll see what happens.
Okay, let's go next to Marcia Swanson.
I too agree with Cheryl, that we need to take a long, hard look at it. These economic times, it's going to be really difficult to pass anything. And it's not because we don't want parks. It's because some people can't afford them. Some people are losing their homes right now. We're working right now on putting together a Blue Ribbon Committee, members of the community, all of you, to give us ideas of what we can do, what we can afford, what's going to be the best way to get this passed. We all want parks. We all know they're necessary. They help our property values, they give our kids a place to play. And there's something we have to have in our community. A community without parks would just be unheard of. But how we're going to pay for them is a really tough question right now. We are looking at all options. This Blue Ribbon Committee, maybe there's a sponsor out there. Maybe somebody knows a huge company who would like to sponsor our park, and then it wouldn't be on the taxpayers. We're looking right now at every option we can get. We're holding fundraisers, spaghetti dinner on the 15th at Station 61. Money is going to the park, so be there.
Thank you. Martha Bridges?
I, myself, think that the community needs parks. And I think that they are a great draw for future development, both residential and commercial. I feel that the $28 was never enough. I think that it was designed to be low enough so people would pass it. I think we should include all parcels, both commercial and residential. And I think we should include all voters. And I think that we should follow the proven methodology that was used in Temecula and Marietta and many other cities, so that we would actually have enough to really support the parks. And also enough to put aside, so that we could develop future parks. I know it might be a tough sell, but I believe that people would vote for it.
Thank you. Ben Benoit?
Parks are a great asset to our community. And even if you don't use the parks on a regular basis, it's helping you, whatever is left of your house worth, keeping that up. And without that, that park, you know, if that's fenced up and chained up and brown, it's going to affect every property value in the community, from commercial to residential. And even if you're not out there every day, or even if you're out there every once in a while, it's a great place to be, it's a great community's place to have. And, you know, we had a parks rally. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there because of my grandma's funeral, but it was a great turnout. I think we had a great event there, from what I've heard about it. And I think our community definitely wants this. And it's just something we have to ask the voters. And if they don't want it, we'll have to move on. But, you know, the current fee at $28 isn't covering the parks budget as it sits. And we're going to have to look at that and study that. And if we have to make adjustments there, we need to. And make it a question of the community. I'm not for new taxes, but this is something that, as a community, if we all want parks, we all have to agree to pay a little bit. And without that, we're just not going to have. You know, the biggest resource the park takes up is water. It's our biggest part-line item in the budget for parks. And Martin O'Brien alone is plus $30,000 a year right now for water. And we're going to have to foot the bill for that, or just chain them up.
Thank you. Timothy Walker?
I'm definitely for the parks in our city. And the fee wasn't absorbent or anything like that. It was, actually, it was pretty low. It needs to be on a tiered system, I believe. It needs to be per parcel, because per house doesn't work. And if it's just people living in a house, it's not going to work out that way. You need to, if we're going to have parks, you have to spread them, the cost of that to everyone that's in town. If you're a business and you own a parcel there, you're making money in our town. You need to pay your share to keep the quality of life, because it really is a quality of life issue. On the other hand, I have a place in Big Bear, and I'm, I never get to vote on those things that they keep adding to the place over and over and over. I mean, it's just gotten exorbitant amounts of money. They're always coming up with something else. So there has to be somebody to account for that. So in our area, since there are a lot of families and there are a lot of businesses, they're going to be right there. If they have a problem with it, they can come and say something about it. But it definitely has to be a voter, they have to, the voters have to decide that. It's going to be up to the voter only to do this one.
Thank you. And Kristin Lloyd?
There are many options for us to look into, and I think that is something that this Blue Ribbon Committee will bring forward to the community. And we're going to be finding a publicity marketing, I mean, it's publicity and marketing to make sure that everyone understands the importance of keeping the parks open. Everyone says it is a quality of life. It is going to increase our revenue when we sell our house. And with that, and we will not be able to bring in the economic development that we're going to need. We need to make sure whatever method we use, it's litigation-proof, because we have people that are very quick to sue. So whatever it is, it needs to be litigation-proof. The $28, remember, it was 45 when we opened up the next park. The $28 is low, but I believe, from what I've heard in the community, that they want to keep it $28 right now, only because they don't want it to be seen like the city is taking advantage of the situation. And there's just a very fine line right now between what we're going to be paying, how we're going to do it, and maybe a community services district, so that we're not only paying for landscaping, but we can actually add community centers in. paying for landscaping, but we can actually add community centers in and services in. So thanks.
Thank you. Do we have time for another question? One more? Okay. With all of the headlines in the news with the city of Bell, I will conclude by asking you, what is the appropriate level of compensation for a city council member who also must serve on regional boards and other entities? Let's go first to Timothy Walker.
When I first started to run for city council, I didn't even know there was any pay involved. As far as I knew, it was a free donated time, so that wasn't going to be my issue. When I heard it was a whopping $300 a month to pay my Starbucks card, that was awesome. So $300 a month. Some of the other things, I guess, we have healthcare. I didn't know about that either. I just thought we could opt in and maybe purchase it and get a better deal for my family, and I own the corporation, so I'm already paying a high rate, so it was attractive, but yet, I don't really need it. So I was going to opt out of that anyway, because honestly, I don't think we, as a city, can afford it. But I understand the other people, they have those, they need that type of deal. And you are serving a lot of hours. I'm looking at this, and I'm watching wherever, all these people that are already in the council, what boards are on, everything, and they do put a lot of time in. So it's a, it's a just payment for them, if they can get the healthcare, and that's about all for that one.
Thank you. Kristin Lloyd.
Well, I believe that the $300 is set for us. It's not an amount that we can say, every year we get to increase by a board vote. It's set for us, and it's really not going to be covering transportation, that we get to go to serve the community and find out what other organizations are doing. And that's not why we're doing it. We're not doing it for the stipend. We are doing it because it is for Wildemar, and our heart is there, and we want to make sure that we are providing the best for Wildemar and making the best of the opportunities. For me, I'm very lucky that my husband is our provider right now, and I'm not, you know, I don't need to work. I would like to work, but I think serving the community right now, taking advantage of it, is what I need to be doing, and I'm in a perfect spot for that, to be able to take the time and where it doesn't affect my bottom line of my family. So, thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Aid.
Well, one thing we have to realize, Bell was a charter city. We're not a charter city. We're general law. Charter cities get to set their compensation differently. Our compensation, our stipend, is set by the state, it's based on our population. So that's going to remain the same. It'll go up slightly as our population increases. As far as the insurance, that was a discussion that was held when we first incorporated. Most people on, that serve on city councils tend to be wealthy or poor. You don't have a lot of in-between. I do this full-time. I don't have another source of income. I live very frugally. The stipend from city council and from the small stipend from the two regional committees I serve on, that's what I live on. So for me, insurance is important. If you don't want to use it, you don't have to. You know, you can take advantage of it or not, but insurance is important for the employees. We don't want our, the few employees we have, we don't want the unions coming in. If we don't offer them insurance, coming in and saying, hey, join the union and you'll get insurance. So that was another discussion that was held.
Thank you. And Marsha Swanson.
$300 a month, nobody does it for that, and that's not going to change. We are a general law city. The insurance is a nice perk if you need it. If you don't need it, you don't get the money. It's either insurance or nothing. Some of us need insurance, some of us don't. But it also ensures that the people that are serving are going to stay healthy, be able to do their job, and serve their community. I think it helps at least keep you feeling a little bit safe there. We'll never be a charter city. We're not going to be charging exorbitant amounts. And it was nice that some of this came to the press, to be able to explain. Our city manager's the lowest-paid city manager in the whole area. All the cities around us are higher, including Lake Elsinore. The only one that is lower, I think they're up next, is Canyon Lake, and she's a part-time city manager. So I think it's important that all those facts came out. Sometimes you hear things and rumors start, and they're not true.
Thank you. Martha Bridges.
I, of course, understand that we are a general law city, and that the stipend is set by law, and so there's no question about that. I think health benefits are very important. I personally think that the council got carried away. There are six or seven different policies, and probably more than most people in corporate America have access to today. I don't think that that's wrong to have those things. I ask whether we can afford it during this recession, and whether the money could not be spent better. And of course, there are a lot of people who disagree with me, but that is the way I feel about it. I think that, you know, that money could be possibly better spent for the people we serve.
And Ben Benoit.
You know, I think the city of Bell gave us all a great warning. If we want to be a charter city, residents of Wildemar, stand up and say no. Because, or any other city, you really ought to look at why it is your council members want to make you a charter city, and they better have a real good reason to do that. Because this is what can happen when there's no one watching, or when they try to hide stuff. And thankfully, the laws in California are pretty good about if you try to hide stuff, you're going to go away, and that's what's going to happen in Bell, because I believe that we're hiding a lot of stuff. And, you know, as far as our stipends, you know, they're set by the state, and it's not a whole lot, and if you're getting in to do this for that, then you're in the wrong place, the wrong room.
Thank you. That concludes our question and answer session, so let's move on to closing statements. Let's start with Cheryl Aid.
I would like to continue serving the community. I have an unequal reservoir of pre-cityhood knowledge, and serving on five subcommittees, two regional committees. I also have a reservoir of knowledge and a historical knowledge of policy and the issues we face as a city. It is a lot of work, it's a lot of study time. I don't mind doing it. I really, I really enjoy what I'm involved with. Is it frustrating? Yes, sometimes it's very frustrating. But I think once you start getting involved with your community, you can't, you can't walk away from it. And when I'm no longer on the city council, I'll get involved in something else. I don't know what it's going to be, but I will be involved. So I just would like to say, if you've watched what I've done over the past two years on the council, and you'd like me to continue, then vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from Marsha Swanson.
Wildemar is a city in progress, and we need to improve our roads, we need to keep our parks open, we need to have a strong police and fire department, and as of today, we have a substation, police substation at City Hall. I'm really happy about that. Our officers will be able to work right from there today. But my experience as a businesswoman, and the service I've given the community over the last two years, has taught me to balance budgets, to take care of problems with staff, and there's been some tough problems and challenges we've had to look at as a city, and I think I've been able to work through those. I live and I work in Wildemar, I'm here to listen to you, I'm available every day of the week. I would like to continue serving the next four years, and I do ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Lloyd.
Well, I do want your vote for cityhood, as the Wildemar Community Council. I'd like to continue to serve in the capacity of community. Right now, I'm serving on the Wildemar Community Council as their treasurer, and we have turned that from a political entity into a service entity, and we are continuing to serve Wildemar, the needy, the poor, those who have no voice, the disabled. I have worked with the Parks Committee, and will continue to work with the Parks Committee. And like everyone said, I will continue in no matter what capacity, but I do, I believe I'm in a perfect spot to be able to serve Wildemar, to go out and spend the hours with Wildemar first and foremost at my thoughts and my daily actions. I do want your vote. Too many sentences too long.
Thank you. Ben Benoit.
I look forward to serving the community as well, and I've been doing that through our Rotary Club, and as well as part of the Chamber. And there's a lot of great people in both those, and the Wildemar Community Council is a great group, too. But as a community, we have to look forward, one of the biggest things we need to look forward to right now is parks. We've got to get out there and work on that, and I think most of us would agree at this table, that's our next project coming down the road after this election. And I hope we can all work together, looking forward to that. And in the long term, we've got to look forward to what we can bring to our city to help the sales tax base, and bring that to our city as we can to improve our city the way we all want to improve it. There's a lot of great ideas in Wildemar, it's all about funding and how we're going to do that over the long term.
Thank you, Ben. Martha Bridges.
I too would like your vote. I feel that this is a very special time in my life. I've retired after a very long career in business. I have a really solid business background. When I was with Kaiser Permanente, I managed a budget approximately four times what the city's is. More than that, I also agree that it takes a lot of time and a lot of work. This is not a part-time job. I agree with the incumbents completely with that. And being retired, I have the time to give back to the community now. And I have become involved in many things since I retired, but I really would like a chance to help Wildemar through this difficult economic time, and to build a fine foundation for the future.
Thank you. And Timothy Walker.
I've been running the business for 29 years now, so I've dealt with the budgets every year. I've had to make cuts where they need to go. I'm one of those people that are the middle-income person, that owns a company. Not the rich guy, and I'm not the poor guy. I'm right in the center, struggling every day to keep people working, to keep my employees with healthcare. I understand those issues, those are really hardcore issues to deal with on a daily basis, making those payrolls, trying to find new clients to service. Those are big issues. I come with that perspective, because I've been doing it for so long, I do understand how to play the game of business, which is, sometimes it's not a very nice game, because you're having to deal with unruly people. Really, there's no easy way to ask for people's votes. I didn't want to be a city councilman. One of the issues came up, and it drove me to want to do it. It's going to be time-consuming for me, but also, I do have time. I've been able to work those things around because of my partner. Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you, candidates. I'm going to turn it over now to Nels.
All right. First of all, we'd like to thank our moderator, Dr. Stacy Cyril Chapin from Mount San Jacinto College. Nice hand for Stacy. And I'd like to thank the candidates as well. Tremendous job, very professional decorum. Appreciate your participation as well. Thank you very much. We'd like to thank our audience here in the auditorium, our audience on PE.com. You can view this forum on a video later today, we'll have it up later tonight, on PE.com, on the road trip page of the politics area of the website. Would also like to thank the tremendous support we're getting here at the college. Everybody has been tremendous, and our staff, Dave Kaufman and Louis Amistoy. We'd like you to remember to vote on November 2nd. Very important, not only for Wildemar, but for the other issues on the ballot. And then we would like to invite you to join us on PE.com on November 2nd. We'll have a live election recap show, and those results will trickle in very slowly, so we'll also have a recap show on November 3rd as well. Thank you very much for the Press Enterprise. I'm Nels Jensen.
[applause]